When you're ready, members, I'd like to start the meeting, please. Thank you. Good evening, councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me. Also, please, can you ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, can I remind you, please, to speak directly into the microphone? Make sure your card is pushed firmly into the console. This evening, members, we are joined by a new planning officer, Gemma Patterson. Welcome to Eastern, Gemma. And so now we move on to the main items of business. So to confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on 12th of August 2015 have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you. I'll sign those at the end of the meeting. Do we have any apologies for absence, Fiona?
Yes, Chairman, we've got apologies from councillors Brian Ellis, Mike Band, Patricia Ellis, Michael Goodridge, Val Henry and Stuart Stennett.
And now, members, have any members declared any interest before the meeting?
None received, Chairman.
And do members have any non-percunory or disclosureable pecuniary interest to declare now? Yes, councillor Seaborn, sorry.
Yes, I need to declare a non-percunory interest in item 6.5 as I was a member of the Bramley Parish Council Planning Committee that considered that application and submitted a no objection comment.
Thank you, councillor Seaborn. Have there been any questions received from members of the public, Fiona?
None received, Chairman.
And I believe there aren't any updates, is that right?
That's correct, Chairman.
That we should be aware of this evening?
No updates, Chairman.
Thank you. So in the event of site inspection being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 2nd of November 2015 at a time to be agreed. Moving on to the planning applications, we have no public speaking items this evening. And the first application is item B1 WA20151351, Field Farm Fersen Lane, Ruddwick, RH123AR. Change of use of land from sighting of a mobile home for ancillary residential purposes to purposes of bed and breakfast accommodation. Rebecca, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The application site outlined in red on the screen is accessed via Fersen Lane which is located to the north. There are residential properties to the north of the site along Fersen Lane. And the site itself is surrounded by paddock land which forms part of the wider farm. There are mature hedgerows which run along Fersen Lane and along the site access. Turning to the block plan on the screen, the site comprises a large two-storey detached dwelling with an existing mobile home sighted to the north-east of the dwelling in close proximity. An area of existing hard standing is located to the north-west of the dwelling, here. The existing mobile home has been used for ancillary residential purposes following the granting of a certificate of lawfulness in March 2012. The applicant wishes to use the mobile home for ancillary bed and breakfast accommodation. Parking for the bed and breakfast accommodation would be provided on the existing hard standing here to the north-west and domestic parking for the farmhouse would be provided on the driveway here and here. No engineering works are intended to be carried out in connection with this. Moving on to the floor plans and elevations, to provide a verbal update to members, the elevations shown on the screen differ from those in the report as they have been amended to accurately reflect the fenestration of the mobile home on site. The mobile home would provide for two bedrooms, a bathroom and a lounge area. There are no building works proposed as part of the application. Moving on to photographs of the sites, this is a photograph taken from Fersen Lane, looking to the site. So the farmhouse is sighted there. The mobile home existing on site would be just to the left. You can see the screening in place along Fersen Lane. Moving to photos of the site itself. On the top left, this is taken from the field to the north of the application site, looking in with the existing farmhouse and mobile home. The bottom photo is from the south of the application site, looking out onto Fersen Lane with the mobile home to the right there. This one again is looking into the site, showing the mature hedgering along the site access. The mobile home is just located behind the hedging, there. Before I move on to the determining issues, if I could draw members' attention to the update sheet. The council's private sector housing manager has commented on the application in relation to a caravan site licence. The current use of the mobile home is exempt from the requirement for a caravan site licence and in the case of the proposed use, legal advice would be sought as to whether this exemption would still apply. Nevertheless, this matter would be a separate requirement to planning consent. Turning to the determining issues of the application, firstly, the matters of principle and technical judgment, the principle of development, planning history and parking space provision. The site is located within the countryside beyond the Greenbelt and an area of great landscape value. Development relating to tourism may be acceptable providing it accords with relevant policies of the local plan. Policies LT4, LT5 and LT7 of the local plan encourage the upgrading and reuse of existing buildings for visitor and holiday accommodation. However, as the existing mobile home is considered to fall within the definition of a caravan, not a building, the proposal would therefore not strictly accord with these policies. The planning history is a material consideration. A certificate of lawfulness was granted in 2012 for the sighting of a mobile home for residential purposes ancillary to the main dwelling. The county highway authority has assessed the application and has raised no objection. Officers are satisfied that adequate parking would be provided on the site for the proposed use in compliance with parking guidelines. Turning to the matters of planning judgment, we've got the impact on countryside beyond the Greenbelt, support to rural economies, the impact on the AGLV, design and visual amenity and impact on residential amenity. Whilst the proposal is considered to not strictly accord with policy, officers considered that the pro-proposal would provide for satisfactory access and parking to serve the proposed bed and breakfast use. Having regard to the existing lawful sighting of the mobile home within the site for ancillary residential purposes, officers considered that the proposed change of use would not result in any additional material harm to the appearance or open character of the countryside above that which already exists. Paragraph 28 of the MPPF supports the promotion of a strong rural economy through the growth and expansion of existing businesses and enterprises. The MPPF also states that the provision and expansion of tourist and visitor facilities should be supported. The council's economic strategy sets out that there is an identified need for more budget accommodation options such as bed and breakfast. The main dwelling on the application site has been used in connection with B&amp;B accommodation since 2011. Up to two bedrooms at any one time are in use for this purpose. Officers considered that the proposal would meet the identified need for visitor accommodation in the borough. The existing mobile home is sighted approximately 100 metres away from the neighbouring dwellings on Fersen Lane. Officers consider this to be sufficiently distant so as to not result in any material harm to neighbouring amenity. The recommendation is therefore set out on pages 16 and 17 of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. Members, over to you. It's councillor Dinas.
Thank you. As has been stated, this is an application to change the use of land and it's in the countryside, outside the Greenbelt and outside a defined settlement. I've noted the consultation and see that UHRS Parish Council have supported this. And the issues I've considered when looking at this is the to encourage tourism and the rural economy, which has been raised, demand for accommodation, but more importantly, the adverse impact, if any, on the visual amenity. I've also looked at the any additional traffic generation and it doesn't appear that this will cause any at all. This already has a certificate under section 192, so the visual impact will be no different to what already is in existence. This is about a change in use. So having considered the impact on the countryside, the MPFF, AGLV, highway safety etcetera, I support this application. And I think the three conditions that have been set out on pages 16 and 17 are appropriate. So this gets my support, but I will clearly listen to any other views from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have it? Go ahead, please.
Very interesting one. I'm interested in how it may conflict or create anomalies with regard to how we would see travel as accommodation being provided in the new site. It seems strange to me that we should promote a building, a temporary building, for permanent use, which I think it is, so that we have a mobile home which could be towed away and a much larger one or a different one brought on site. And how would that affect in terms of how we would deal with as an authority with travel accommodation if it was proposed in that particular space? Perhaps one or two more mobile homes in this particular situation, for instance. I wonder if the officers would like to comment on that?
Thank you, Chairman. Just if I can perhaps clarify for you councillor Byam. The sighting of the caravan on the site is lawful. It is there and it is lawful for ancillary accommodation purposes. In effect, this would still be an ancillary use for the the mobile home. It would be ancillary to the bed and breakfast use which in itself is ancillary to the main residential use. It is a slightly different test when we are looking at establishing a new planning unit for the sighting of a mobile home for gypsy and traveller purposes and there are different policy tests to take into consideration. In effect, this is perhaps the simplest way of looking at it is if it were an outbuilding, say, used for ancillary purposes, it's the same kind of situation. If members are concerned about the use of this mobile home going forward, we could, they could impose a condition to restrict its use as ancillary to the residential and bed and breakfast use on the site. Hope that clarifies for you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Want to come back?
Still not completely clear. If the is the mobile home, and perhaps my my colleague next to me can answer the question as well as the officer, is it mobile home for visitors or is it for accommodation for the people who live in the main house when they have extra visitors? I'm aware of that sort of thing happening in other places. In fact, relatives of my wife many, many years ago used to move out to the mobile home in their backyard in Rill and live in there during the summer months while they had lots of visitors filling the house. I think that makes a difference to the way this is treated and it perhaps should be ancillary.
Thank you, Chairman. The existing house is subject to a restrictive condition as part of the well, it is restricted by way of the certificate of lawfulness relating to it in that no more than two bedrooms can be used for bed and breakfast. So there is control in the use of the existing dwelling already and that would remain in place with this. So that any, any position to change the arrangements of the dwelling for bed and breakfast and to intensify that use within the dwelling would go beyond the certificate of lawfulness and would possibly require consent in its own right. So you have that control over that situation arising. Thank you.
Councillor Byam, are you satisfied?
As far as is possible.
Councillor Stennett.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was only in answer to Mr Byam's question about the size of the mobile homes.
Sorry, councillor Stennett, could you just raise your microphone? Can't quite, that's better, thank you.
In response to councillor Byam's question about the size of the mobile home, I think that is about the biggest you can get which is delivered on a vehicle in two halves and put together. I think I know what he's referring to in the question he asked about the possibility of other homes coming along because I think the council have had a problem just a little bit further down the road, a couple of mile, a mile and a half away with this sort of mobile home. People bringing in more than one and putting other members of their family in. I think the council is still trying to get that resolved. But this looks to me like a better, much bigger and improved version of what they already have on site. And as such, I couldn't argue with the fact that I think it will look much nicer for anybody who's coming along to be part of the B&amp;B. And I do also support this. That's it.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Taking up the point that's been raised, can we add a condition in here that basically restricts this to to the use that's being applied for, specifically for bed and breakfast? And perhaps consider something based on the size that's allowable?
Chairman, if I may. The size of the caravan on site would be restricted anyway. If it goes beyond specific sizes within the legislation, it would fall outside the definition of being a caravan and would require separate consent anyway. There is a condition recommended, condition one, about any further caravans being brought on to the site which I hope offers you some comfort in that respect. And we can, as I've mentioned, add a further condition relating to the use of the caravan if that would satisfy you.
I think that would satisfy me to have that condition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Foraczewski.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, I would totally endorse everything that my fellow colleagues had, Kevin Dinas. And I was just going to pick up on the point that Catherine raised about a condition that does make this ancillary to the main dwelling. I would like that to be added, but absolutely this gets my full support. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any more remarks or observations members wish to make? So in which case we move on to the recommendation. So the recommendation is that permission is granted subject to the conditions set out in the officer's report. Plus the condition as described. Could you, do you want to hear the wording if they've managed to get anything together? Would you like to hear that now or are you happy to leave it with the officers? Happy to leave it with the officers, okay. Can I see a show of hands, please, for those in favour of the recommendation?
Six in favour of the recommendation? So you're abstaining?
Thank you very much. And so we don't have anyone against. And so permission is granted, subject to the conditions and that one extra one that we've suggested. Thank you. Moving on to item B2 WA20151354, Willards Farm, the Common, Dunstful, GU84LB. This is change of use of land from agriculture to residential purposes together with associated change of use of land from residential to agricultural purposes. Did I just say that twice? Construction of swimming pool and associated enclosure following demolition of existing outbuildings, swimming pool and wall as amplified by email dated 27th of August 2015 and amended plans received 8th of September 2015. Gemma, would you like to introduce the application, please?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The site lies to the west of Dunstful Common and to the south of Mill Lane. It's an aerial view of the site which is, forms a farm complex which comprises a number of buildings, including the main Grade 2 listed building, a Grade listed 2 barn and various ancillary residential dwellings and outbuildings. The proposal would result in the demolition of an existing modern garage, a modern stable block and a raised concrete 1915 swimming pool and the erection of a new swimming pool with a brick plinth enclosure. The proposal also seeks to remodel the existing residential curtilage by swapping 267 square metres of existing agricultural land with 634 square metres of existing residential curtilage. The land swap involves the regressing of the land to the west of the site from an artificial level to a natural slope that reflects a topography of the surrounding countryside. These are the areas proposed for the land swap. This area here is currently agricultural land which they're proposing to change to residential curtilage. This area of land here is currently residential curtilage which they're looking to change to agricultural land. And this land here is currently curtilage which they're proposing to change to agricultural land. Here's some elevations of the proposed pool and the enclosure. As you can see, the enclosure is made of brick plinth and would have a concrete roof. Sorry, beg your pardon, clay roof, clay tile roof, beg your pardon. And this is the floor plan, just showing the outline of the enclosure here and the proposed swimming pool. Looking at some photographs now, what you're looking at here are the buildings to be lost as part of the proposal. This is the domestic garage and this is the existing stable building. The area of land here, which is agricultural, is the land that's looking to be changed to residential curtilage. This picture here is showing the resident curtilage to the west. Majority of this, probably from around this section here, is what they're proposing to change to agricultural land. Picture we're looking at here is just at the very end of the residential curtilage, looking over into the countryside which just gives you an idea of the topography of the land. And this is another picture, just looking towards again to the buildings to be lost. This concrete wall here is the existing swimming pool which is raised and this area here which would be lost from agricultural land to residential curtilage. Looking to the left of the slide, the matters of principle and technical judgment are the principle of the development, having regard to the site's location within the countryside beyond the Greenbelt and the loss of the agricultural land, noting that the council's independent agricultural consultant is satisfied that the proposal would not result in the loss of the best or most versatile agricultural land and that the agricultural land to be, sorry, that the curtilage to be changed to agricultural land would be of an equal substitution. Moving to the right of the slide, members are being asked to exercise their judgment on compliance with countryside policy, having regard to the significant gain of open agricultural land and the reduction of residential curtilage. The visual impact and impact on the AGLV, noting that the proposed swimming pool and associated enclosures are relatively domestic structures that would be read in context with the existing residential farm complex. Impact on the heritage assets, having regard to the conclusion of the council's historic building officer that the remodelling of the curtilage would provide a better setting for historic buildings and that the relocation of the swimming pool and its associated enclosure away from the main dwelling would not harm, called harmed, to this heritage asset. And finally, impact on residential amenity, noting the remote location of the site from surrounding residential properties. There is no update to this application and therefore the recommendation remains that permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 6, on pages 36 to 38 of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Gemma. Members, over to you. So councillor Byam.
Just a comment, I think it's a very interesting proposal to swap and change between curtilage and non-curtilage. We've often struggled with dwellings or properties that wanted to increase their curtilage but never, I've never, I don't remember any instance where they've given any up in exchange and it looks as if they're giving up more than they've gained. And I think it's a very sensible conclusion.
Thank you, councillor Dinas.
Yes, although that was never my strong point, I think is a net gain of 386 square metres of agricultural land. Loads. And I see through the consultation, no representation has been received. I'm not sure whether they had no representation or they just didn't receive it. When you, when you look at the quality of the land being swapped both ways, they're equal in quality. So that doesn't cause a problem. And I think the changes to the swimming pool and domestic buildings are proportionate and appropriate for what's trying to be achieved. So it's all very much of much, but just a change of land. So I think this is quite an unusual one, but one I would support. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Gray.
Yes, just to clear up, I am a member of the Dunstful Parish Council but this has not been discussed within the council and no representations have made. Generally, the Willards have been improved considerably and I think that this continues the desire of the current residents to improve their property without any detriment to the look and the appeal of the property. So I would very much support this.
Thank you. Any more questions? Or comments? No? So the recommendation is that, subject to the consideration of any new material representations received by the 16th of October 2015, permission be granted, subject to the conditions set out in the officer's report. Can I see a show of hands, please, from those in favour of the recommendation?
All in favour, so permission granted.
Thank you, members. And permission is granted, subject to conditions and there being no new material considerations received by the 16th of October. Next is item B3 WA20151408, St Joseph's School, Amlets Lane, Cranley, GU67DH. Provision of a new gravel car park with connecting access and a new gravel footpath, including new bollard lighting as amplified by additional information received on the 16th of September 2015. Jo, would you like to introduce the application, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This application relates to the provision of a new car parking area within the grounds of St Joseph's School in Amlets Lane. Amlets Lane runs along here. St Joseph's School, the main buildings are in here and here. This is the main access drive, or the only access drive up to the school. And there's an area here to the side which is grassland. But you'll see from the aerial photograph, has been used for a number of years as informal parking area for the school. This is a proposal for the actual formalisation of this car park. This is a proposal for the actual formalisation of this car park. It's proposed that it be a gravel car park with a tarmac Adam entrance here onto the tarmac road. And there are low bollard lighting around the, around the car park. There's a footpath or sort of a walkway footpath to the north up here. And it's proposed that there be two column lighting posts to light the footpath from the car park up towards the school buildings. St Joseph's School is a specialist co-educational residential and day school for learners with moderate, severe, and complex learning difficulties and autism. The school is also a children's home, with some learners living at the site for fifty two weeks of the year. Given the very specialist nature of the school, it has a very wide catchment area, and it receives placements from twenty two local authorities. The lawful use of the site is as a residential school, falling within use class two, C two. And for the avoidance of doubt, a children's home also falls within that same use class. Furthermore, the site of the proposed car park is within the grounds of the school, and therefore there is no material change of use occurring at the site. The, the application is for the physical development of the car park, the formal provision of the car park. In terms of the determining issues, the, the issues are the principle of development and the lawful use of the site, which I have just described, and parking provision. And as matters of judgment, you're looking at the impact on the Green Belt, the visual impact on the AOMV and an AGLV, the impact on any residential amenity, and the very special circumstances. The application relates to the provision of a car parking area with provision for a hundred spaces on an area which has, over a number of years, been informally used for the parking of vehicles. Whilst the parking of cars per se would not require planning permission, the formalisation of a surface car park does, and hence the application. The proposed car park would have a gravelled surface and would have low level lighting bollards to illuminate the parking area, with two street lamps on the footpath between the parking area and the school buildings. The site lies within the Green Belt and an area of outstanding natural beauty and an area of great landscape value. Officers consider that the creation of the hard standing proposed by the application, together with the proposed bollard lighting and the resultant cars using the car park, would be a visible form of development, which would alter the nature of the site and would not maintain the openness of the Green Belt. The proposal would therefore amount to inappropriate development in the Green Belt, for which very special circumstances must exist. Members will be aware that the MPPF attaches great importance to ensuring that the sufficient choice of school places are available to meet the needs of existing and new communities. Furthermore, great weight should be given to the need to create, expand, or alter schools to meet the requirements of communities and to widen, to widen the choices for education. Having regard to the nature of the school and the complex needs and requirements of the learners that result in the need for a high ratio of skilled staff to meet those needs, it's acknowledged that the school has a high parking requirement. Given the lack of any effective public transportation and safe pedestrian access to the site, and the specialised nature of the staff such that they come from a very wide area, officers consider that very special circumstances do exist to justify the proposed car park, and that these circumstances outweigh the harm caused by way of inappropriateness and any other harm. In relation to the issue of lighting, and as detailed in the update sheet, the council's environmental health officer has advised that, in his view, there is no need for any additional shading to the proposed lighting. However, in the absence of any luminance details, officers recommend the imposition of a condition requiring the submission of such details. In view of the above, officers recommend that, as outlined on the update sheet, the application be granted, subject to the conditions set out on pages fifty five and fifty six of the agenda, and the additional condition set out on the update sheet relating to the luminance light details. Thank you, Chairman.
And thank you, Jo. Over to you, members. Councillor Foracheski.
Madam Chairman, thank you. That was with a degree of eagerness, even if I noticed it myself. And forgive me, please, and with your indulgence, Madam Chairman, I would like to declare a non prejudicial interest in this particular one. And I'm sorry I didn't declare it earlier, I'd lost my trail of thought. I'm chairman of the Cranley Parish Council Planning Committee, and this, this application came before us some time ago. Can I just thank the officers for this report? Because I think it's, it's a wonderful report, and it highlights the very special circumstances that exist within this wonderful environment, that provides such a great haven for some very wonderful children who benefit enormously. And it's a much appreciated facet within the community of Cranley. I understand that it is in the, an area of outstanding natural beauty and the Green Belt and so forth. But I think the officers have put together a very well documented report that does show the very exceptional circumstances and the need for this particular car park. I know the area very well, and the car park has been used for a number of years informally. I don't believe from where I, from, I don't believe myself that it will have any impact within the surrounding area, obviously on site it will. So I congratulate officers on this very well written report and fully support their recommendation. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Stenner.
Yes. With your indulgence, I too am on the parish, Cranley Parish Planning Committee. So would like to... I've forgotten the word I need. Declare an interest, sorry. The parish had one only concern, and that was the lighting. Because it is very much out in the countryside, and we were a little concerned about bats or anything else that might be flying around. To suddenly have a largeish car park with lighting, high, two high lights, so, which is why the idea of putting shades on them to downlight came about. So having a condition on that would be, would be very good. The other thing concerns me a little, to hear that the car park will be gravel. I'm not quite sure whether any of the cars that would use this car park would be for those with children who use wheelchairs, in which case it may be a little difficult for wheelchairs to use. So I'm wondering whether tarmac was considered, or an area just for wheelchair users was considered? Perhaps you could enlighten me?
That's a very good question and very interesting one. Thank you, Jo.
My understanding is that when children are delivered to the site, and they come in various forms, whether they in minibuses or taxis, or obviously by parents, they tend to be dropped up towards the top end of the site, close to the school buildings. I don't think it's envisaged that the children will be wheeled to any great extent. That, that's why, part of the reason why they, they need a car park, because the area closer to the school is deliberately kept clear for deliveries of the children and, you know, and visitors in that sense. So I think the school are mindful of that and use that facility closer to the school for the, for the drop offs.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissary? Councillor Dinas.
Thank you. Just for clarity and reading the report, it talks about a hundred spaces, and the application states a hundred and five. So I just think we need to be sure what we're actually agreeing, just so the numbers are correct. And listening to my colleagues, it's, it's very much about has special circumstances been identified? And I do think they have. So I, I support it. I just like that clarification on numbers, and also agree about the condition about the lighting, I think would mitigate that as well. But other than that, I'm supportive.
I counted the plan a number of times, and the plan did have a hundred parking spaces. It's the application form that says a hundred and five, but the plan actually shows a detailed layout with a hundred on it. So in terms of the lighting, the environment, the environmental health officer said that he didn't think the shades were necessary. And the condition that we're suggesting is about the luminance levels. But obviously, if members are concerned that they feel that shades might be, you know, then we will have to look into whether that's possible as part of the, part of the condition. As I say, that the recommended condition is to do with luminance levels and the avoidance of spilling. And then if you get the luminance level right, there's no need for the shades. But, but yeah.
Thank you, Jo. Just for clarity, then, on page two of the update sheet, there is this extra condition, number four. Members, make sure that you're happy with that. And if not, let's have a chat with the officers about it. No comments? Oh, councillor Byam.
I wasn't going to comment about that. I mean, I'd like to support the view that this is definitely, I mean, it's a very good school. I know a little about it. I've visited it on a few occasions through being a governor at a similar type school within the Guildford Borough. It's a Roman Catholic school, well supported, well thought of. Be interesting to know, we haven't got photographs, but the difference between if it's been informal parking, it's probably looking worse than if it was covered in gravel. I recognise the concern. What can we see there? Not very much at all. But anyway, I, I support the, the idea of doing that. Again, at the other school I was associated with until, until about eighteen months ago, there, there was so much informal car parking because of the lack of space that had been originated, because of the types of children that are there, and the types of, the level of support staff that are needed. And that grows as the problems grow, which I know that this particular school deals with those particular problems, and therefore much higher levels of, of staff requirement to cope with, you know, the children and bring them, and give them a good educate, as good an education as they can. I support it.
Thank you. Any last comments? We're ready to move on then to the recommendation. So may I have a show of hands from those in favour of the recommendation to grant permission, subject to the conditions set out in the report, and the additional condition on the update report?
That's all in favour?
Thank you. So, thank you, members, permission is granted, subject to the conditions. And finally, item B four, WA two oh one five double oh four one, Tortoise and Hare, Running Limited, nine A High Street, Bramley, GU five O H F. Change of use of first floor to a flexible use for the purposes of retail storage, sports injury clinic, and exercise studio, sui generis. Erection of a second floor extension in connection with this proposed use. Replacement shop front, installation of air conditioning unit to the rear, and construction of a bike storage facility, as amended by letter and emails, dated the thirty first of July, the eleventh and the twenty fourth of August two thousand and fifteen, and plans received the thirty first of July and the twenty fifth of August two thousand and fifteen. Jo, would you like to introduce the application, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Members will recall that this application was deferred from an earlier meeting in August to enable the consideration and re-notification on a set of amended plans for a second floor extension to the rear of nine A High Street, which now includes the provision of a mansard roof. Members will also recall that we, we went on a site visit. So this is the site, the high street, and the car park to the rear. The applicants have sought to introduce a degree of flexibility of use on the first and second floors to enable the space to be used for the purposes of retail storage in association with the retained ground floor use, a sports injury clinic, and an exercise studio. The application also includes a replacement shop front, air conditioning units at the rear, and a timber bike storage facility. The site lies within the Bramley Conservation Area, a designated heritage asset. And in accordance with the MPPF and policy HE eight of the local plan, a proposed development should preserve or enhance the character of the conservation area. It's noted that the site has been the subject of previous applications to erect a second floor extension and a two storey rear extension. And if I go through the plans with you now, these are the existing elevations seen from the high street. So it's this unit that we're looking at here. It's this element that we're looking at from the back. And you'll recall from the site visit that whilst we can see a ridge up here, this is actually a false pitch to the front of the, the high street. And this is actually a flat roof, which extends in depth, and that's probably best shown by that side elevation. So that's the ridge that you can see, and this is the rear of the, of the building. The existing floor plans show the retail space at ground floor with a small sort of office behind and first floor storage. This is the proposed amended scheme. So we now have a mansard roof, together with a flat and a dormer on the rear. The bike store is, is down in this location here, and you'll see, you can see the air conditioning units. When you're looking at it from the rear, as I say, going back to the previous slide, that's your existing line. This is the proposed new second floor with a slight pitch and the mansard roof. That's the dormer. And then obviously you've got the store at the back down there. The ground floor remains as retail at the front, with office storage at the back. There's the bike store, and then you've got car parking in tandem to the rear. And as, as now amended with the degree of flexibility, you've got the first floor with a retail storage space, an exercise studio, treatment room, and an office. And then on the first floor, an exercise studio, stroke, work, workshop space. And then this is a flat roof on the existing, the part, the only remaining part of the existing building. That's a forty five degree line taken from the neighbour's window. This is the appeal scheme. As, as I indicated before, there has been a number of applications on this site. The first one was in two thousand and ten, and it was dismissed at appeal. This shows the rear elevation. So on the, the proposal was for a first floor, sorry, a second floor extension up here. It's probably better to see on the second slide in a second. But it also included a two story, flat roof extension off the rear. So when you're looking at it at the side, that line where I'm drawing the, oh, sorry. Where I'm drawing the arrow at the moment is the line of the existing building. So this was the two story rear extension, and you then had a new, a new floor at this first floor. That's it from the other side. So you can see that this is the new bit that was proposed, and there was the, the first, the second floor. There was then a further application, which was refused. That application omitted the two story flat roof extension on the rear, but it did retain a first floor, or second floor, sorry, roof extension up in, up in here, which again, looked like that. That's currently your line at the moment. And the ground, the floor plans show similar sort of layouts. And that is a comparison of the proposal, which is this side. So you can see the mansard roof against the appeal scheme. And as I say, I've given you the two plans there, so you can actually see that this was the bit that was added. But it's not particularly clear on this one, but it follows that line going down there. And the appeal was, as I say, was dismissed. So there are your matters of determining issues, your, your principle to do, and then the flooding, which members will recall, there wasn't really an issue. The matters of planning judgment are the Green Belt policy, the design and the impact on the designated heritage asset, i.e. the Bramley Conservation Area, the loss of the A one shop storage space, which has actually been secured in one of the other floors, although, albeit a bit of a flexible storage space, but there is space for the storage unit, impact on the residential amenity and parking. In dismissing the application for the second floor and two story rear extension, if I push you back to that one, the inspector commented that in relation to the second floor extension, and I quote, "I am not satisfied that the proposed extensions, particularly the cedar clad unit at the second floor level, would satisfactorily take account of the form, setting, local building style, and heritage of the settlement." "All buildings in the vicinity of the appeal site are traditional in form and design, with facing materials being predominantly brick and tiles, and roof pitches being tiled and pitched. In contrast, the second story additional addition proposed here, which would be clearly visible from Windrush close to the north, as well as from the parking area to the rear, would be at odds with the form and building style of its surroundings." The inspector concluded that the proposal would fail to preserve the character and appearance of the Bramley Conservation Area. Whilst officers acknowledge the proposed scheme has omitted this two story rear extension and has sought to provide a mansard roof with the use of tiles to match those in the vicinity, officers are of the view that the proposal has not overcome the concerns of the appeal inspector and are of the view that the proposal would harm the conservation area. area. Members are being asked to exercise their judgement as to whether they consider the proposal preserves or enhances the conservation area and whether it leads to harm. If members agree with officers that the proposal is harmful, they must consider whether that harm is substantial or less than substantial, and whether that harm is outweighed by other considerations. Turning to the update sheet, members' attention is drawn to the receipt of no objections from parish, Bramley Parish Council and the Highway Authority. One further letter of objection has been received from a neighbour, and the applicant's agents has drawn attention to the proposed roof form and has highlighted a number of existing mansards within the vicinity within the village of Bramley. The agent also reiterates that the proposal will contribute to the vitality of the shop and the wider village centre. The recommendation of officers is that the application be refused as set out in the agenda on pages 85 and 86.
Thank you, Jo. Members, over to you. councillor Byham.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I always respect the officers' views with regard to conservation areas and their care for it, but in this case, I don't actually agree. I think that the change is neither better nor worse, I don't think, than the, the existing structures around there. There's always good and bad in any conservation area, I'm sure. This particular building, as it stands, is no good recommendation for our conservation area. I think this probably slightly improves it, but because it's only on part of that roof, it's a limited amount. One of the things that we as a village, and us as a borough, must do is to support our business community as best we can, and our, all of our village shops and town shops are under threat in a range of different ways, which we always try, I'm sure, to, to make sure that they are successful, as successful as they can. So I, overall, I don't consider the, the conservation area issue to be as strong as being stated, and I believe it ought to be allowed, and I will support that view when we come to make a vote.
Thank you, councillor Byham. Any, any other comments? councillor Seeburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'm sure fellow members recall considering the main issues behind this application in, in August when we had our site visit as well, and we deferred making decision then for two, two main reasons. So firstly, some members were concerned about accepting a design that was similar to the earliest, earlier submission, as had been turned down both by Waverley and by an inspector on appeal. The paperwork in August didn't allow us to compare the rejected design with the new proposals, whereas we now have that information in front of us. You can see that the rejected scheme was for a bulky two-story back extension for apartments clad in cedar tiles with metallic and glass balcony railing and with little sympathy for the local vernacular. This differs significantly to the new scheme with its small mansard roof extension, which is in keeping with other local roof solutions. So while it was absolutely correct for members to pay heed to the rejection of the earlier scheme by an inspector, I believe that the proposals that we're now considering are significantly different, meaning that our decision should not be unduly influenced by the previous inspector's conclusions. A second reason for the August deferral was the last-minute modification of the design by the applicants to include the mansard roof, which, as has been pointed out, is in keeping with several other prominent buildings within the Bramley Conservation Area. So in August, it rather appeared to this committee that we were being left to judge which of the two alternatives was acceptable, which of course is not our role. Now we're just left with one, one solution to consider. So of the four reasons for rejection given by the officers in the latest paperwork, the first three are matters of opinion rather than hard fact. The protection of the Bramley Conservation Area and the Green Belt are worthy objectives. But as councillor Byham has said, I hope members will recall that the, you know, the site visit showed that that setting does nothing really to enhance either the conservation area or the Green Belt, and so the developments being proposed might actually improve the overall ambience. But more importantly, I'd like to remind us all that the proposed extension is designed to enhance the prospects of a high street business that is exactly the kind of business that Bramley would like to retain. The village currently has four empty commercial properties in the high street and a fifth in the process of being converted from commercial to domestic use. So this constitutes approximately 20% of the shops in the village currently empty. Bramley clearly has an issue with retaining successful businesses, and failure to support business development where appropriate through the planning process has the potential to make matters worse. So in conclusion, it's my contention that for the best of reasons, the officer, officers have got the balance of the assessment wrong. I don't believe that the proposed plans do significant harm to the conservation area, but I do believe that failure to support this application will prevent the growth of a business that enhances Bramley's struggling high street scene. And I believe the current plans differ significantly from the 2011 plans, thus allowing us to reach a conclusion that differs from that of the appeal inspector. So for those reasons, I consider the officers' decision to decline permission should not be supported. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Yes, councillor Gray.
Yes, I think the officers have clearly identified what the issues are, and whereas they're very grateful to their, their full report, I think I have a problem that the, the building, if we were looking at it, probably wouldn't get approved, but it exists, it's not in question here. The modifications that have been made to it, in my view, are not, they're probably making marginal improvements to the, the look of that building, and on balance, I would say that I would support this proposal.
Thank you. Any more comments? I'd just like to say that I think I'm minded to, well, in fact, I am, made my mind up. I believe we should, as councillor Byham has expressed very eloquently, support our business community, and I think there's going to be a big need for that in the future. We need to start considering that very, very seriously. So are we ready then for a show of hands? Members, can we have a show of hands, please? Pardon? Yes. A show of hands for those in favour to refuse permission for this application.
None supporting refusal.
And those in favour of granting the application? Sorry. Oh, sorry, yes, I'm so sorry. We need to have a proposal, so who, is somebody prepared to put a proposal forward that we? Thank you, councillor Byham.
I propose that permission be granted.
Do we have a second, eh? Thank you. So now we have... Do we want? Yes, are there any conditions that we want to put in? No? No, I was just asking the members whether any, any suggestions for any conditions, and so officers...
I think, I think the proposal is, is pretty fulsome in, in terms of what they intend to do and, and how they're going, and therefore I, I can't at this present time, unless Jo or anybody else wants to come forward with any suggestions, think of any, any conditions other than the conditions of, of materials which are acceptable, which I'm sure is a standard procedure anyway.
Thank you, Jo. Please do.
Thank you, Chairman. I've just got a list of some suggested conditions that members might want to consider. They're just the highlights, though, you know, the headlines, but submission of materials you might want to consider, particularly given it's a conservation area. A highway condition, the highways authority do recommend a condition about car parking provision, cycle parking provision. Also, I think you might want to consider whether you want a condition about car parking be provided and retained, as shown on the plans. No new windows in the side elevations. The flat roof area not to be used as a balcony, roof garden or terrace, and that an area should be retained for retail storage to support the ground floor retail function because of the flexibility of use, there's no clear defined space, but I think, you know, there needs to be an area shown for retail storage, and obviously a planned numbers condition.
Thank you, Jo. So I think now we, we need to vote again? Yeah, we need to vote again now. Oh, Matthew wants to speak, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, just one additional comment. Our understanding is that in these situations, the, the committee does need to give a reason for approving the application. What we've done is, we've clearly, we've taken very, very detailed notes of, of, of the issues members have considered and where that what they see in terms of the benefits of the scheme, and rather than try and tease those words out now, my suggestion to, to the committee is they leave that to us as officers to formulate that and, and have that as part of the decision.
Thank you, Matthew. We're happy with that, Members. So now we need to vote, and I need to know, I need to have a show of hands, please, and those who are supporting the motion to refuse, sorry, to grant this application.
Seven in favour of granting permission.
Thank you, Members. So permission is granted. Thank you. And there are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you, Members.